I had no message that she was not going to be there.
Let's give her ten minutes, anyway.
All right.
I'll go ahead and start the meeting, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. This is the meeting of November 8, 2010, is starting at approximately 7:01. We'll start out by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, as I just said, our recorder is not present, and we'll give her until 10 past to show.
Get a picture on this thing anymore.
You have to turn it to Channel 13, which is a degree of difficulty.
Yeah, it's on the side, yeah.
It kind of, the channel bar kind of slides across the top. It's not a digital tool.
Where is it?
Did you go hiking?
Is that us, or is that somewhere else? That's the other one, so that's 22.
There's too many people.
That's Exeter, I think.
It snows. What's funny? Oh, real? They don't kind of do it. The money, yeah. Do you have all the bags for him to carry, you know?
The channels?
Yeah.
That looks like two.
Sorry, I brought it up.
Do you have to go by yourself, or? You're supposed to have a button system, aren't you? Because we saw on TV, the gentleman that fell when it kind of passed. They just made a movie about it. Why didn't he have a button system?
It's skipping.
Why did anybody ever take it off the channel?
Then again, how often does that happen?
I'm sorry, I brought it up.
Maybe a call, Dan, just to confirm that we're on. Can't confirm it with the TV.
Nothing turns on.
But it works.
I know, but that's not our table. Everything meets here. It's the only clue I have of it.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One thing that was included in your packages this evening was the Handbook for Local Officials, October 2010, the Board of Adjustment in New Hampshire, which is the, I believe you had this copy prior.
Okay. Is that taking the place of something else, or is that a new source of information?
It would have been.
It's number, Chapter 5, Tab 5? Is that?
I don't believe it's Tab 5.
No, it's a different. No, it is. It's called the same thing, it just has a different.
Different cover page.
Cover page, yeah. So that's going to replace?
Yes, the 2006 printing.
It's 5? It's not, it's past that.
Tab 5?
Yeah, Tab 5. Under Tab 5, I've got a handout, and then I've got the Board of Adjustment in New Hampshire, Handbook for Local Officials, October 2009.
You have the most recent one to that.
So that's getting, being replaced with the one of 2010.
Correct.
Thank you. Is it, by any chance, do you have Erica's cell phone?
I do not.
Never happened before.
Maybe she's not coming, she doesn't always come, right? Sometimes she doesn't come.
She takes it off the DVD.
Okay.
Just surprised the office wasn't informed. I hope everything's okay, but.
Well, they said I'll give her another three minutes, just in case.
So is this just a reformatting? Has anything changed in it? Do you know yet?
I don't know, I just got it, Terry, myself. It was just printed this day.
It would be nice if they followed the format that I've observed in past experiences where any changes were highlighted in some.
This looks completely different.
It may be totally different, which is just as, well, you need to read the whole thing to get a good feel for it, anyway. Sorry for this. Well, I think we can do a few housework items before she shows up. If she were to show up, she could get them off the record, just to update her. We've had a couple of changes since our last meeting. First off, Mr. Rosa has been appointed to the, is a regular board member, and he is now present, and on behalf of the rest of the members, welcome, Mr. Rosa. Nice to have you. And I noticed that Vice Chairman Shelton is not here with us tonight, and as such, I'm appointing Mrs. Quacks as the alternate to take his position. She was here for the case, and this will be good continuity. Okay. And as Mrs. Quacks reminded me, I can reread the preamble that we read each time, and that is, the petitioners will be heard in order that they were posted in the legal notice. However, the Chair, Vice Chair may change the order with consent of the Board to expedite the public hearing as appropriate. Each petitioner would be allowed to state why his or her position, excuse me, petition should be granted. Following the petitioner's statement, any abutter or interested party would be allowed to speak for or against the petition. In the interest of getting facts, the Board may go around a second time. The Board may elicit testimony at any point, but could not allow any cross-discussion. The Board would ask that the public not repeat themselves or their neighbors' testimony. If they wish to indicate concurrence, they were welcome to do so. After hearing all the facts regarding a petition, the Chair, Vice Chair will close the public hearing, and the Board would deliberate and vote on the petition before moving on to the next petition. There may be some cases where a second meeting may be needed to make a decision. The zoning administrator would present the finding of fact to the Board prior to the Board making their decision. The zoning Board was empowered to legalize the breaking of the zoning ordinance, and this is not done lightly. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this Board to grant a petitioner's request. It is responsibility of the petitioner to prove their case, so that this Board has justification for granting the requested petition. The minimum requirements are listed in the form received by the Planning and Zoning Office, and it would be helpful if petitioners proceeded on that basis. I also ask that all cell phones and pages be turned off. We're now 7:10. We are assuming that Erica is not arriving.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the Chairman to revisit the application that was submitted for the variance, as well as a special exception.
Yep.
Chairman, can I make a point of order?
Point of order, yes, sir.
For the record, my name is Francis Bruton. I'm with Bruton and Barrowby in Dover, and I represent the applicant, Vince Jaras. And I'd object if, in terms of moving forward, without, obviously, someone taking the minutes.
The, I don't know what it's.
Common practice is that if the recording secretary is not here, she does it even at council meetings, that she uses the DVD, and she will take the minutes from there.
Right. We are on the air, we have confirmed that. It is being recorded.
Okay. And also, if you're opening up the meeting with respect to our application, I'm wondering who the Board members are who are sitting on the application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. You can stay up there if you want.
I'm sorry, what was that? We actually had some other stuff. I didn't hear you. What was the last thing you said?
I just. You want to know, that's, I just, in the housecleaning items, I appointed Mrs. Quacks to replace Vice Chair Sheldon, Sheldon, who is not here. So the five people sitting are those that you see up front now.
Okay.
Minus our administrator.
Thank you.
All right?
Yep.
And, actually, yeah, be seated, that's fine. The first order of business is the review and approval of minutes of our last meeting, October 18, 2010, and it has become apparent that we do not have the full minutes. We have the minutes of the application that we, that has been continued, but we don't have the minutes of the second application. So based on that, I don't believe that we can approve the minutes. Any discussion?
I mean that we amend the agenda not to approve the minutes this evening.
Okay. One more second.
Second, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would leave the continuance to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if we make, can we take a look at the application? I think if, just to clarify the intent of the meeting, and I think you have your hand here.
Please, I'm lost.
Is, on the first page of the application is Section 1, Appeal for Administrative Decision. The, I'm presuming that the applicant has typed this in as being the decision of the building official to be reviewed. So what we've, this is not an administrative decision, this is a request for a variance. The second application following this is a request for a special exception. So I'm thinking this language, this typed-in sentence probably shouldn't appear on this application.
Okay. It's, I find it confusing, but hopefully you understand what's going on.
Do we have a copy of that? Were we given a copy of that one?
I think we were.
Okay, it's the original application?
Yes, and this could be the copy of the original application.
It was filed on October 5.
Otherwise, I think what it's leading us to is that there is, this is an administrative appeal.
It isn't, though.
And it isn't.
No.
So I think that that portion should be.
Should be Xed out. That's not, I mean, this is the first time I've seen this. I didn't see it last time. And I'm not sure that this is something that we normally see on the Board.
All right.
I mean, that's a question.
All right, just, I guess, just to clarify, we certainly have, the reason why the denial for the application came to this Board was because of its criteria for the special exception for the accessory apartment.
Yep.
So it was followed up by the applicant presenting to this Board that request for the special exception, as well as followed up by the various requests.
Okay. I mean, this is basically.
And this makes it appear as though.
This was denied, basically.
The application was denied, which is not the application to the zoning Board.
To the zoning Board, no.
So this language, where it indicates a decision of the building official to be reviewed, is, probably shouldn't be there, because I don't think this is an appeal of the administrative decision.
Couldn't you have had a statement typed in saying that this has been denied because it doesn't follow 7.03?
And that was denied on the.
On the basis of?
That was denied on the original application that the applicant made.
Right. And that's, so that's the reason they've come to us for a variance request.
Correct. Which isn't to do with Section 1.
Do you understand where we're, I don't think it really matters.
That's just your own form. That's your form. It's used multi-purpose.
Right. That's our form. But this is not a decision of the building official to be reviewed.
That's right, because your application is used for variance requests and for appeals of administrative decisions.
Okay.
And for other things, actually.
Which is on Page 2.
That's right.
So I, what I'm, what I'm leading to is, I don't think that Section 1 should be inclusive of any language whatsoever.
It probably should have been Xed out.
Because the actual request before this Board is the application for the variance and the special exception, which is followed up on the following pages.
There, yeah, there were two applications.
Yes.
So there's two forms. There's one for the variance, and then one for the special exception.
Correct. Which has, which neither of those has anything to do with, with an appeal from an administrative decision, which is Section 1.
Right. That's why it's left blank, but that's just your form.
I understand.
You would, you would prefer in the future that that be crossed out when we're only asking for an appeal?
Or nothing be indicated in that section.
How can you not? There isn't anything indicated now.
There isn't anything indicated. This would be binding only if there was some explanation as to what you.
Correct.
Review, what you denied.
Correct.
Right, so, there's nothing there, so it's, the point is moved, I don't think we should discuss it anymore.
Yeah, right, no. I mean, if there's, if there's any confusion at all, you could, a simple thing to do would be just to X out any section that doesn't apply.
Okay. So I'll put this back.
As long as you have some understanding of what you're doing.
I'll only put this back in this file.
Okay.
In this order. I think we were probably in there.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, I, if, I'm not sure whether the public session was open or not, but if it wasn't, it is now.
Thank you.
I believe that you, Mr. Chair, that you left the public open from the last meeting, and I think we have to read into Vincent Jaras' Public Hearing for a Variance, reference Section 7.03B of the New Market zoning ordinance. The applicant requested variance to allow consideration for an accessory apartment and an existing detached structure. If the variance is granted, there will be a public hearing immediately following for a special exception for the accessory apartment itself, reference Section 7.03B. The lot is located at 10 Langs Lane, tax map R5, Lot 62-2, R1 Zone, and this is a continuance from our October 18, 2010, meeting.
Thank you very much. I was just going to ask our administrator to do that, but that's fine. You saved him the effort. I would like to comment before we proceed. I was tasked with the, by the Board to check on a couple of things from legal counsel. I took it upon myself, rather than contacting legal, to contact LGC. Actually, I first got a ruling, not ruling, a statement from our planning director, which Diane's title.
Town Planner.
Town Planner, thank you.
Town Planner, yeah.
Who said that she felt that, in affirmative, that we, on both of the questions. And then I followed that up with the LGC and the legal, the lawyer's statement was, anything that's in the zoning regulation, and that we have a variance granted, and specifically special exceptions.
And?
And the other thing was, the statement shall be contained within.
Right.
That's just a phrase from a document, anything of which may be granted a variance.
Right.
Question on that?
I have a response to the two questions posed, which are identical to what you just said, which you would imagine, presumably, but I would like to submit it just for the record.
Absolutely.
I don't think I need to go through it because of your explanation, but basically, yes, clearly, if the word "shall" is in there, that's, does not detract you from granting a variance. And also, as you said, you can get a variance for the issue related to a special exception. So I'll just hand it to you.
Okay. Just keep it for the record.
Thank you very much. The only thing I kind of want to add to the discussion is, I want to.
Copies to that, or?
Speak to the, kind of, the concept of the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, because we had a lot of discussion about that. And I'd like the Board to refocus on what that criteria is, which is the spirit and intent of the ordinance. You have, normally, in the context, when I come before a Board, I talk about the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and I look to the beginning of the ordinance, and I find it, and there's always a purpose clause, which is exactly what your ordinance has. And part of your ordinance, Section 1.02H5, says to provide for a variety of quality living arrangements with emphasis on quality neighborhoods. There's two components to that. One is quality living arrangements, which is echoed in, I think, our intent here, to provide for accessory apartments, and to maintain a quality neighborhood. As you know, one of my big arguments is that the place where we'd like to have this is already constructed, and we'd rather not do more construction, and we'd like to maintain the quality of the neighborhood. So that's just your general purpose and intent, or spirit and intent, if you will, of the ordinance. Then, because you have this special section on accessory apartments, the ordinance then takes it upon itself to describe to us, those who have to read it and try and understand it, and to you two, what the purpose of that section was. And it's clear that the purpose was to, quote-unquote, "ensure adequate provision of small, affordable residential units for various segments of the population." It then goes on to say, "And to help homeowners utilize excess space, to generate revenue to help offset the cost of home ownership." That's what your ordinance says. I think your discussion that we had at the last meeting was not confined to what the ordinance says, but to perhaps what the drafters were doing when they put this section in your ordinance. But I think what they intended to do is what they did. They created a purpose clause that reflected exactly what they were trying to do, which is to provide for affordable residential units for various segments of the population. And they were also complying with what your general purpose of your ordinance says, which is to provide a variety of quality living arrangements within the town. So I think it's pretty clear, I think, actually, all of you probably do agree with me that we're providing a small, affordable residential unit for some portion of your population. I think you all would agree with me, and if you don't, I'll have Mr. Jaras say that what we're trying to do is help defray his costs of home ownership. And I think you would all agree with me that you were trying to provide a portion of a variety of quality living arrangements within the town. So I haven't seen, maybe it spelled out as clearly in other cases as I do here, that the spirit and intent of your ordinance, not only with respect to its general terms, but with respect to its specific terms, have been addressed squarely and completely. And so I would ask that you reconsider what your ordinance does say, and, you know, those are the rules that you have to interpret. Those are the rules that are created by a different Board. What they say is what we have to take and look at and read and understand, and if we comply with it, then we move forward, and we ask for the relief. If there's something else in there that we can't meet, we have to consider whether we even come before you. But in this case, we've clearly identified what the purpose and intent, spirit and intent of this ordinance was, and we believe we've complied with that. So we ask, again, that you provide approval of the variance. We ask, again, that you keep in mind that we're trying to avoid disruption on the property that really is completely unnecessary. And to keep in mind that this is unique. It's a very unique piece of property. I think when your ordinance defines what is a single-family dwelling or residence, they try and give a blanket statement, but everyone knows that every property is different, particularly in a, in a community like New Market, where, you know, you may have a colonial, you may have a ranch, you may have an L-shaped house, you may have a house that has a breezeway to a garage. You have a lot of different types of structures, and we believe that this property promotes to you a unique situation, and that the granting of the variance would be appropriate.
Okay.
So I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments?
I have a question.
Yep.
How long has the garage been connected to the septic system?
1991.
And did you get an approval to add that to your septic system?
At the time, we did, when we got the structure approved by the building inspector at the time, I think he was Albeon Dope.
So you have approved septic system plans? Were they recorded?
It was not necessary in those days.
In '91?
Correct. It's a grandfathered septic system, and when we got the permit, we continued the use of the system that was there.
Okay. Also, seeing how we're still under public, I did get some information from an abutter. I received a letter, a signed letter from an abutter that would like me to read it into the record, if I may, Mr. Chair. This is dated 10/19/10. Please be advised, I do not wish to see renters on private property as requested in the variance being worked on to pay taxes. Close family members, especially older folks, okay, no children. Also, I don't feel stirring vehicles for profit should be allowed either.
Stirring, probably.
What was that?
You said stirring. You probably said stirring.
Oh, storing vehicles for profit should be allowed either. What if there was a fire? And I also received a phone call from her this evening. She left a message and said that she saw a motorcycle being stored Sunday when she came home. She's concerned, and this is from Jeanette Frenold from 6 Candice Lane. And I, you have a copy, I believe. Okay, I'd like to. And then I also have, I'd like to ask, probably through the attorney, if, if there are any covenants and restrictions in the property when it was.
She sent it.
Subdivided. Are you aware of any?
Can I, I'll respond.
Oh, to the first thing?
Yeah. I think your own. That's okay. Is that a copy?
That's a copy for you, sir. Thank you.
I think the person says, "No children." That was an interesting comment, but, in any event, your ordinance was, was probably geared, in fact, your purpose says, to not foster the use of these premises by children. So you limited it to either a one-bedroom or efficiency. We've already indicated to you that this is an efficiency. It's not even a one-bedroom. So you took that into account already. We've complied with that, and I don't, I don't see the merit in addressing any of the other issues. The question about covenants and restrictions has nothing to do with the grant of a variance. Oftentimes, people will come in and say, "This development might be affecting my covenant or restriction," and I'm sure you've heard, that's a civil matter. Or another issue is, "I've got a lot here," and then the abutter says, "Hey, that's part of my lot." And you say, "Always, go figure it out. We're here to look at our ordinance." So I don't think there's any issue in terms of whatever the covenants and restrictions are.
Are you aware of a covenant or a restriction placed on this subdivision?
I believe there are covenants and restrictions, yes. I am aware of that. I am aware of that.
And if somebody having a lot of property in that subdivision, Phase One and/or Phase Two, are they legally obligated to adhere to those covenants? And if so, do they actually have a legal ability to apply for a variance when they're not legally allowed to do it?
I challenge your use of the word legally. It's vague, and I don't understand what you're asking, and I'm not going to give anyone in that subdivision legal advice in this context.
All right. Just, we do have an attachment to a VA mortgage, and it is described, there are several restrictions. I won't go through all of them, but two of them jumped out at me, just to read into the record. Number two, there's a total of 11 restrictions. Number two states, "Only one single-family dwelling shall be permitted on each lot and from ground level should not exceed two stories in height." And then number five is more interesting. It states, "No trailer, tent, garage, barn, or other outbuildings erected on a lot shall be used either temporarily or permanently as a dwelling." So right here, we do have an attachment to a V8 mortgage, if you want to pass that down there so they can see.
That restriction does not apply to this property. And if you're representing it, does-
Has it been nullified, or how does it not apply anymore?
Because when the subdivision was created, the master lot, and this often happens, and in fact, this has happened with the town with its conservation easements, carves out the lot, and that those restrictions are not applicable to that master lot.
If you-
And that's what's kept going on here. And I would ask the chair to step in at this point, because we're not talking about your zoning ordinance. And I've given what I think is an adequate response to the question, but it's irrelevant, and it's not appropriate for the board.
Okay.
But it's something that I believe if this comes back again, that it should be, the evidence of it should be known, and if you read the language to it, his house was included in this particular one.
You're parsing out only portions of the evidence, and you're not providing the board the full documents or all of the deeds, particularly the one associated with this property.
I have it right here.
Okay. Enough said, I think. Any discussion or anything else that anybody would like to-
Are we getting into general discussion, or are we talking about-
You can speak to this if you want, but I think I agree with Lee Well.
I'll have some general things, once we begin to discuss. I don't have anything against that.
Okay. All right.
Close the public hearing?
Public hearing, yep, is closed.
At?
At 7:35 PM. All right. Discussion. Who would like to start?
I have a question for the zoning officer. What would it take for this thing to be considered a separate residential unit? How would we, how could we consider it a separate, what would we have to do to make this a separate residential unit?
A residential unit would be able to maintain a single person or a number of people in a unit that has cooking facilities, kitchen, bathroom, be able to prepare food.
Separate bathroom facilities?
Yes. Would be a, would be described as a residential unit.
So it would have to have its own septic system?
Not necessarily. There are shared septic systems. There are some largest subdivisions of 15 and 20 houses that have a single septic system.
But they're designed and approved for that?
Correct.
I mean, the only, this is an efficiency apartment, which is a residence. The only thing I believe that is, identifies it as anything different, is that we're calling it an accessory apartment, but it's a standalone residence in effect, but we're calling it an accessory apartment. The same thing could be located somewhere else, and you'd say it's a-
So if it was in, so if it was a duplex, each one would be considered as separate?
Yes.
I mean, not that this pertains to New Market, but our daughter first lived in an efficiency apartment in New York City that was less than half the size of this. And that was a condo. I mean, she owned it. So I think it's just that our document recognizes this as a, as an accessory apartment, which is very specific.
And I think we would refer back to the definitions when we look at dwelling units, multiple family, single family. And just to add some additional information, in respect to the accessory apartment with septic designs, that the adequacy of the design is part of that approval.
Right. And I have one other question. I think you told me last time, but correct me if I'm wrong, that there had been some instances where people had built garages with the intent of getting approval for an accessory apartment, and then waiting a year so that the garage could become part of the residence, and then coming back and getting accessory apartments. Did you tell me that, or did I imagine that?
I did, I did say that. And the, I think the way that that was decided on was not necessarily through the planning board or the zoning board or any language in any of our documents.
It has happened.
Pardon me?
It has happened, though.
It has happened.
Which would be against the spirit of the accessory apartment ordinance, clearly, since it was created new and not using-
Well, what the problem was, was an existing structure. And then when the commission looked back at the ordinance itself, they found that the existing structure was some complications with an attached garage that was already, say it was built in 1970. Is it the garage and the living space proposed above was not actually part of the existing structure of the multi, of the residential unit? It was additional space attached to the residential unit.
But those people did receive approval?
They did until the committee met, and as a result, the standalone garage and the apartment over was no longer permitted upon the application.
But you could, but you could still build an attached garage and come back a year from now and get approval for an accessory apartment?
Correct.
How could you not?
I don't believe you can. It states in 703B, "It shall be contained entirely within the detached, single-family residence."
But people have received those things.
They have received it, received it prior to the committee-
This was changed in 2004.
Changing this because of the fact that it was becoming rampant, that people were just putting up garages. And if you look at a garage to a building, a garage is basically an accessory use. It's not, that's why they changed it and said, "Shall be contained entirely within the detached family residence," to prevent that from happening.
We approved one last year. It's right up on 108 going south. It was a lady. Her husband ran some kind of a dental lab.
But that's, that was in the same-
That was in the existing-
It's an existing building.
It was existing.
It was all within the one dwelling unit.
Only difference-
It wasn't detached. It's all part of-
The only difference between that one and this one is about 15 feet of walkway. Otherwise, it's exactly the same. The unit's in the back of the garage. It was used as a business, and she wanted to convert it into an accessory apartment. The only difference is that 15 feet of breezeway.
It was, it's within the original footprint of the house.
It's in the garage, Roseanne.
That's the original footprint. That is how the house-
Well, you're telling me that that can't be done now.
That is how, that is how the house was built.
It's not like there was just a breezeway.
Well, what Dan told me is that if you build a garage, and you come back a year from now, they'll consider that part of the house. Now, that's what he told me last time. Is that not true? Am I wrong about that?
In the past, the exist, the word "existing structure" became complicating to the ordinance. And the, both of those situations have occurred, where there was a standalone garage built with the granting of an accessory apartment over the garage, or like you're describing, the structure on Route 108, which was a garage converted to an office space, which was then converted to a living space, or the accessory apartment, as it was described.
But that would, you can still do that, because we did that.
I don't know if you can still do that. I think it was-
No, I mean, we, you can still approve it, because we did approve it.
I, I'm not so sure that you can approve it, because you did approve it one time.
No, no, I mean, in this particular case, we did approve it.
Every variance is its own special case.
Excellent point.
Dan, if I applied, if I went down tomorrow and I wanted to build a house, and I wanted to have a garage on that house with an apartment above, could I do that? A brand-new house?
If you were in a zone where duplexes were permitted?
No, and it's, and I wanted to have an accessory apartment.
You would, you would be before the board?
As a special exemption.
Correct.
So you're saying new construction, you could end up doing it?
Well, the accessory apartment isn't permitted.
One other thing.
If you're, unless you're in a zone where there's a duplex permitted, then you actually are building a duplex.
Right. One other-
It's all in the definition of what you're-
So that, that being said, I don't really think any of this has anything to do with, how does this apply to what we're dealing with here? I mean, he has an old, I don't understand this discussion that we're having right now. That's-
Right, I know. This is your first night, and not to belittle that.
No, no, please. I just, I don't understand where this particular discussion is going in.
I mean, I have any trouble explaining my position. If you're confused by it, it seems to me like we're burdening this guy, and that other people have received a different treatment in the past. And I don't, it doesn't say anything here about, it says entirely within the detached, single-family residence. You could easily make an argument that building, approving an apartment over a garage would be within the detached, single-family residence, just how you define detached, single-family residence. And that isn't, that isn't defined here. It simply says. So if, you know, I'm looking for some guidance here.
Are you confused with the difference between a detached garage and an attached garage?
I'm not confused about anything, I don't think. What I'm asking you is, what's been done in the past? And how do I know from reading this that you can't build a garage and come back a year from now and get approval for an accessory apartment, which clearly would be in defiance of the purpose of the ordinance?
Right. I agree.
And if that's possible, then we're burdening this man unfairly. And if it's not possible, that's another thing altogether. I'm still a little bit troubled by the fact, the only difference between the one we approved last year and this guy is 10 feet of breezeway, which he can easily build, if he can get a variance for it. Why would we not give him a variance for it? I don't know. He wants to connect his garage, get in and out of the weather when he goes to get his car. He comes back a year from now.
Because it's two of them setbacks.
Well, that's fine. But we give variances for setbacks all the time, for a lot less better reasons than a guy that doesn't want to have to walk in the snow to get to his garage.
I can understand the conversation, but I'm not so sure it's appropriate to say that because there was one issued last year, that this one should be issued.
Absolutely.
I'm not so sure that's-
Well, neither is it appropriate to say shouldn't be, because one wasn't issued last year. I mean, it's the same question. We're dealing with a separate issue every time. And I'm troubled by the fact that the only difference is a few feet of breezeway that he can build. And I think if he came in here for a variance, because he didn't want to walk out in the snow to get to his garage, we'd grant it to him. And if we did, he could come back here and get the approval for that secondary apartment. And we would have just caused the guy an unnecessary hardship.
You can't, unnecessary hardship is, as you see in the last criteria, is almost impossible to, if you have reasonable use of your land, you cannot go for a hardship at all.
I think we'd also lead back to the definitions again of the accessory apartment, stating that there's a self-contained residential unit, which I think was your opening question, is exactly what is a residential unit or a dwelling unit?
All right. One team.
Complete with its own kitchen and bathroom incorporated.
One team.
And definitions.
Four.
111. We will not have the same page. This is an addition.
Definitely page seven.
Accessory apartment.
Existing, yep, within the single-family residential structure.
And I think we should probably make a recommendation to have a definition added to this zoning ordinance, which tells us what is existing and what isn't existing. And I, here we are faced with that decision, is, I guess, within the board's own mind, is to determine what is existing and what isn't existing.
But it states here, what gets you out of that, just for an, it doesn't say an existing structure. It says incorporated within an existing, single-family residential structure.
Correct.
It has to be within the existing, single-family home. It can't be a separate dwelling. The definition of an accessory apartment states that.
That's what he's asking for a variance from, Roseanne.
Right.
That's why people come in here. They, they want a variance. They want a exception to a zoning code.
But, but then you have the language to the ordinance itself that states specifically that it has to be within the, it must be contained, it shall be contained entirely within the detached, single-family residence.
Yeah, but we are able to give a variance for that. I mean, anything in here is variable.
We're just supposed to interpret what the intent was when this was written, was-
And it was written that they did not want single-detached buildings, even if, with the breezeway. It has to be in the-
And we shouldn't have approved the one last year. We were in error.
No, because that was, that was in the existing.
If you look at that house, that structure, it was all one, like, it was just a, you can call it a garage if you want, you can call it another room with a garage door on it.
I don't think the discussion, I don't think we need to talk about the previous.
No.
No, let's stop that.
Yes.
It's not applicable. I, I think the, you know, we've got contrary situations here. We've got 7.03B, which specifies where an accessory apartment is allowed, but on the other hand, we also have the basic overriding zoning criteria, which sets up zones and within each zone, what the desire is for that zone to eventually result in. Initially, when the zoning was drawn up, many places were not in compliance. And the question is whether you want to make something more non-compliant by granting a variance, or to try and uphold the intent of the original zoning. This applicant's, application is in the R1 zone. There are a number of factors about the existing lot that are not in compliance with the R1 criteria. And granting of this variance will make it more non-conforming.
Can I grab another point, Mr. Chairman? 7.03B, number five, no exterior changes shall be made to significantly alter the appearance of the structure from the street, and there does, there are windows that have been added which would alter.
They don't be visible from the street.
That's debatable.
I thought about that, too. I don't think they'll be visible from the street.
Not sure. Well, that's, that's-
Just wanted to bring that up.
Would be visible from Candice Lane?
I'm not exactly sure if it's visible or not, yet.
I don't know. I don't find that stuff about noncompliance particularly relevant.
That pertains to the special exception. That's the second thing. We're not talking about that now.
Okay. If you don't mind, the board would like to-
Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to space?
Because there can be further discussion when the statement of facts are-
All right. Ms. Quark, would you like to read a statement of fact?
Criteria number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I'd like to make the motion, it's a statement of fact, that the proposed use would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and by granting the variance, and by granting the variance would not be contrary to the-
Before you go forward, do you have enough copies for?
No.
Dan, is it possible, would it be possible to run off some copies of this, so we all can be looking at this before we proceed?
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just going to run down the staples.
Thank you.
Are you looking for anything in particular? You're looking for everything?
I come in, I come in here and I lose everything. Did you have the agenda?
I gave you my clock.
I know you did. That's what I'm along.
I'll grab you another one outside.
Is there one there?
Yeah, there should be.
Yeah, there should be.
I'm not the only person that this happens to.
There's too much stuff. It's one of those rules, that if something can get misplaced, it will be misplaced.
You find it difficult, and you think that you're going to keep referring to it.
Maybe that's where I did it.
Nope.
Thank you.
Sorry, do we have so many things? Look for this in there.
I know, I usually end up having quite a mess.
It's nice to take this all around you and just leave it out.
Maybe Wayne wants it. Jennifer tonight. Sue publishes that, you know, she sends you the, I assume you're on her email?
Yes.
For the board, so you're receiving, I mean, I think I just got the copy today of the minutes from three weeks ago. And realistically, that's not enough time to properly review it.
I don't know, 3:00 today.
This one's going to go on for a while. I see us being back here annoying her, too. Chairman, can I ask again for another point of order? Do you have five members that are going to vote on the application?
Yes.
Okay.
I, yes.
Thank you. And while we're, while we're waiting, I intended to, but I don't believe that I did. And I'm not sure whether you were privy to the discussion I had prior to the official opening of the meeting. Welcoming our newest member, I ascertained that he had reviewed, I believe he said not once, but twice, the tape from our meeting three weeks ago, and had received all of the written documents and had, had... Done his due diligence and feels that he is able to make a... Yeah, I didn't hear that, but I understand that. Thank you. I'm glad that, thank you for reminding me. Because I intended to make sure that was on the record.
Okay.
Can I ask where this document came from? The board is pointing to Ms. Quacks. Ms. Quacks. Did anyone else draft this, or is this just from Ms. Quacks?
This was a joint drafting by someone else.
Who was that?
Mr. Sheldon.
Excuse me?
Mr. Sheldon.
He's not sitting tonight?
No, Mr. Sheldon is no longer a member of this board.
He's not the vice chair? Says that he...
No, he is not.
That he is. I mean, I'm not...
No, he is not.
Okay. So this was done with a non-board member?
Yes.
It would depend on the timing. It would depend on the timing.
It was, it was done today. He was a non-board member.
Okay.
Granting, criteria one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. It's a statement of fact that the proposed use would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and by granting the variance, it would not be contrary to the public interest. A second on that.
Okay. Discussion?
It's, you know, it's, it's not going to alter it. I mean, there's granting it would not be contrary to the public interest, so it's...
So by voting in favor of this statement of fact, criteria one is achieved?
It is.
Okay. Anybody have any further discussion? All those in favor, signal if they're raising their hands. Aye. Any dissents?
Should, we should clarify that.
Five, okay.
I think because typically the secretary would, once she indicate who...
Maybe you could call roll call, Mr. Sheldon.
Made votes. So we should have a roll call on the vote on criteria number one.
Right.
As read by Mrs. Quacks. And a vote...
Seconded by Mr. Donner.
Was seconded by Mr. Donner. And the vote reveals the approvals, yes or no. Mr. Donner? Your vote?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes. Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Watson?
Aye.
And Mr. Rosa?
Aye.
Aye. Five members vote yes on criteria number one.
Criterion two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. It's a statement of fact, the spirit of the ordinance, 7.03B, which allows for one accessory apartment that shall be permitted per detached, single-family residence in that accessory apartment, shall be contained entirely within the detached, single-family residence. By granting the applicant's request to permit an accessory apartment located in a detached structure would violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives for accessory apartments, and thereby denying the granting of the accessory apartment in a detached structure, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed.
Discussion?
I need a second first.
Second? I'll second. Discussion? This is a little confusing, the way it's...
Right. The way it's worded, it's, by voting in the affirmative, you would be basically stating that you agree with the statement of fact, that it is... It is violating the ordinance's basic zoning objectives.
So that an aye...
A yes is a no vote.
A yes is effectively saying criteria two has not been met.
Has not been met, which, it's not in a single-family existing structure. So in my mind, it has not been met.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Dan, if you would like to.
Mr. Donner? A yes is a no vote?
A yes is a no.
A yes means that...
No means yes. Yes. Yes, aye.
Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Nay.
Mr. Rosa?
No.
The vote is three to two with a yes vote.
All right.
Let me go ahead.
Criterion three, granting the variance would do substantial justice. It's a statement of fact, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the variance would not cause any harm to the general public that outweighs the benefit of the property owner.
Favor a second?
I'll second that as well.
Discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please. I did, no, let's, by voting in favor of this, criteria three is met.
Right.
Roll call, please, Dan.
Mr. Donner?
Aye.
Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
And Mr. Rosa, please.
Aye.
Five yes votes. Criterion number four, please.
If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. It's a statement of fact that the approximate 1.2-acre lot located at 10 Langs Lane with the primary residence and five additional structures in the property would not diminish the value of surrounding properties, thereby criteria four has been met.
Second?
Second that.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donner?
Aye.
Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
And Mr. Rosa?
Aye.
Criterion number five, please, unnecessary hardship.
Owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. Because, one, no fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision to the property because... It's a statement of fact that there is a substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision that unduly, in a marked degree, conflicts with the ordinance, such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. As such, criteria five A1 has not been met. In other words, if you vote in the affirmative for this, you agree that criteria five A1 has not been met.
Do we have a second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a little complicated.
This one, this one would mean that there would be...
Point of order? Point of order?
Point of order?
Yes.
Richard Shelton, 23 Packers Falls Road?
Yes, sir.
Current vice chairman of the zoning board of adjustment. I have submitted an application for resigning from the board. The council has not accepted it as of yet, so I'm still a standing member of the board.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, I guess.
According to criterion five, unnecessary hardship, Mr. Donner?
Aye, yea.
Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Nay.
And Mr. Rosa?
Nay.
Motion passes. So I'd like to make a motion, not having met the five prongs of the criterion, I will make a motion to not grant the applicant's request, section 7.03B of the New Markets zoning ordinance, for the variance to allow for an accessory apartment in an existing detached structure.
Mr. Chairman, have you addressed item 5B? I believe you just voted on 5A. I would, yeah, I would like to continue what the reading, please. Your statement is correct, but let's get the whole thing. We've got 5A2. And first?
It's a statement, okay, before I go into the motion, the proposed use is a reasonable one because it's a statement of fact, if the owner is currently making a reasonable use of the property, that fact is conclusive evidence that a hardship does not exist. The FR criteria 5A2 has not been met.
Give a second. Now, my question is, what is the reason, what is the definition of reasonable use of the property?
If you have use of it as it is stated for zoning, you have reasonable use of your property. It's owned as a residential home. He has reasonable use of his property. He has a residential home in it that he's living. Since they did the governor's standard, that's, the laws have all changed. That is extremely hard to prove now, so...
Hard to prove what?
A hardship. It's not like before.
You don't have to do A and B both, do you? You don't have to do A and B both.
No.
So...
Well, if A doesn't pass...
If it's not established.
Either one of the prongs actually doesn't pass, then you go to B. Right, but you're on A12. Correct. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donner?
Aye.
Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Nay.
Mr. Rosa?
Nay.
Can I, Mr. Watson, could I have your vote again, please?
Nay.
Nay, sorry. And Mr. Rosa, your vote was also a nay. I'm going to go through this again. Mr. Donner was yes, Mrs. Quack was a yes, Mr. Chairman was yes, Mr. Watson was nay, Mr. Rosa was nay. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, and with the treaty two, criteria 52A has not been met, so...
So we go to B. Explain, explain how, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, a variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of it.
I don't, I thought that we would only go into B.
Well, A hasn't, A didn't, A failed, though.
A failed, so we've got to go to B. That's the whole basis for this. That's what we have.
Explain how, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established...
Which they weren't.
An unnecessary... I thought by voting yes on number two, we voted yes, that we agreed.
No, but the one and two are part of A.
Right. But if the criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established...
Then you have to go to B.
An unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist. But the criteria is that, the fact is conclusive evidence that a hardship does not exist. We voted aye, so we stated already that a hardship does not exist.
Okay, but that's, that's part of A, which is number two prong of A.
Right.
5A1 and 2, we both talked about those, and neither one of them passed.
Okay.
So the applicant has the ability to go to B, which allows...
All right, so we'll do that. Explain how if criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reas... distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of it.
Let's talk about this for a minute. What does... Does anybody have an idea? And I... Dan, you may comment if you would like. What this is saying? Special conditions of the property. Which special conditions are there of this property?
The garage isn't attached to the house.
The... Are we trying to get to the...
If I can read the statement of fact, I think that would explain it.
Okay. I just... All right.
I really don't think it explains it.
It does. It's a statement of fact, that it is not enough to show that the proposed use is reasonable. The applicant must establish that there is no other reasonable use of the property that would comply with the zoning ordinance. Even though the restrictions significantly limits the value of the property, the standard is not met if the property can be put to any reasonable use. If the owner is currently making a reasonable use of the property, that fact is conclusive evidence that a hardship does not exist. If you read the whole thing with the governor's island standard, 124 NH, you would understand. I mean, you can barely get a hardship on any piece of property anymore, is the way I basically understand it. It's almost impossible to get a hardship under the new law.
I don't think it's impossible, or they wouldn't have written it. There wouldn't be a reason to have it in there if it was impossible, but it is extremely difficult.
If you read all the new information we had on it, you would... So that was a statement of fact. You need a second?
Need a second. Discussion, please. I mean, the one observation I have is that the property has a number of four or five, I'm not sure how many buildings there are, storage buildings that exist, currently exist, which is, to the best of my knowledge, it would not be allowed if it hadn't been grandfathered, so...
And also the fact that there is a single-family residence in the... An area that is in allowed use, and he also has five exterior buildings that he is using. He does have... He's making a reasonable use of the property, and therefore a hardship does not exist.
Any other discussion?
I mean, there's no way that you cannot agree with that statement. He's making use of the single-family residence. He's got several other buildings on the property that he's utilizing. So he is making reasonable use of the property, so that means that there is no hardship.
Question, Dan? Do you have any statement or anything you want to...
The hardship would not be connecting the buildings? That would not...
No, it states as long as he has reasonable use of his property, a hardship does not exist. He's using his property as a single-family residence, and he has five other buildings that he's using for various entities of private use or whatever, and he does have reasonable use of his property.
He's trying to get an additional use of the property, essentially.
With what he has there, he has reasonable use. So therefore, you cannot say it's a hardship, because he has reasonable use.
Further discussion?
I thought we were try... I thought you had to... He only had to prove that his use was reasonable.
No, that he has reasonable use of his property, which he has more than reasonable use.
That's why you're going to B. B is in a... I believe it's just another way of trying to establish the criteria. It wasn't established under A, but it seems to be more strict than A was. Anything else? Roll call, please. Mr. Donner? Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
And Mr. Rosa?
I'm confused.
Confused. The...
Well, this is a good issue.
I was just going to explain the yes or no.
We haven't had a deal on this new criteria, but we've had it three times this year.
Please do.
One of you are confused. We're all confused here.
If... What's your confusion, sir?
Yes versus no.
Okay. Basically, I believe you...
A yes is a no vote.
A yes means that you are in agreement of the statement of fact that a hardship does not exist. So if you voted yes...
In order to establish... To grant the variance, you need to prove that a...
That there's a hardship.
That there is a hardship.
So by voting yes, you're saying... You're agreeing that a hardship does not exist.
Does not exist.
Does not exist.
And if you were to say nay, you would be saying you think a hardship does not...
Does exist.
And a yes is a no vote.
Yes is a no vote.
I guess...
Want to shed any light on the hardship question?
We're in the midst of a roll call, and I think we've discussed it already.
Yeah, I agree.
What's that?
I think we passed... I mean, I'm...
No.
You're going to say no?
No. No, because I believe a... No.
You're satisfied with your decision?
Yes.
Your answer, okay.
I think a hardship does exist...
Okay.
...to join the... I do.
Okay. All right. Having read the five criteria.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that not having met the five prongs of the criterion, I will make a motion to not grant the applicant's request, section 7.03B of the New Market zoning ordinance, for the variance to allow for an accessory apartment in an existing detached structure. The lot is located at 10 Langs Lane, tax map R5, lot 62-2 in the R1 zone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I don't think there's any discussion on this. This is...
You know, you have... They didn't meet the second criteria, so therefore, you know, you'd have to agree that this motion, they did not meet the criteria. I mean, we could have basically stopped after that one, but we go through all of them.
Okay. Roll call, please, Dan. Mr. Donner?
Aye.
Mrs. Quacks?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Rosa? This is a vote in agreement with the motion.
Not having met the five prongs, I will... I'm sorry, I'm taking a little bit of time.
No, no. You're doing extremely well, and I'm...
Make a motion to not grant the...
If it doesn't meet the five criteria, we can't...
If we all voted a majority of the vote...
You can still vote no.
Yeah, you can vote no, but in the practical fact, it was one of the criteria that we voted yes, and they three voted no, so we didn't make that criteria.
Right.
You know, we can grant the variance if it meets all the criteria.
All right. Yes. I guess.
Is that a yes vote, Mr. Rosa? Okay. Yes. Okey-dokey. Since the application has failed, RSA 677, semicolon, 2 speaks to a motion for a rehearing of boards of adjustment. You have 30 days to appeal. I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yes. Yeah, we'll certainly do that, and there's been a confusion of the law, I think, as well. But in light of that, we're going to withdraw our application for special exception.
Okay.
Which I think you would have expected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry that they had to drag on as long as it has. Mr. Chairman, for the record, would you be like to comment to Mr. Shelton's comments?
We will.
How so? Well, I think that Mrs. Quack's comment earlier indicating that Mr. Shelton was no longer a member of the board was... An error. Well, may... Not necessarily an error, but not... I don't think it was her... Call. Her call to distinguish that to the board. Right. I guess we have no evidence, other than comment, that he had been by choice not here this evening. And certainly his comments to the board, I guess acknowledging his comment this evening that he was still a board member, if the board wanted to discuss that or not. Okay. Does anybody want to say anything? I think that's enough.
Self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory. I guess that's it. Item number four, new old business. Do we have any... Any new or old business?
I defer to the chairman.
Mrs. Quacks?
In light of the council actions the other evening, and in support of other members, I reluctantly have to submit my resignation to the ZBA board.
I'm sorry.
I have some new business?
Yes.
I've also decided to resign in support of the chairman, and Mr. Carr, and Mr. Shelton, and Mrs. Quacks. In reality, the resignation of the more senior members of the board will leave the board in a very weakened condition. Successive zoning boards... To have a successful zoning board, you need a solid base of knowledgeable people, mixed with newer people. That was our goal in requesting the appointment of Mrs. Quacks. Town council mishandled that request, and has resulted in the loss of our most experienced members. As a result of the... As a result, the board may well struggle for some time. I, for one, choose not to participate in that struggle. I'd be pleased to serve again in the future if better relations between the ZBA and the council could be reestablished.
Mr. Glennon, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dana Glennon, 2 Beach Street. I, as you all know, I'm an alternate also for the ZBA board, and I've had extreme pleasure serving on this board in the past as the chair, as the vice chair, and as a member of the board. I also feel that the council has missed an opportunity to put experienced people on very sports and not just this sport. So I also reluctantly will submit my resignation as an alternate to this planning board, um, to the ZBA board, in support of the vice chair, Mrs. Quacks, and Mr. Watson, and for any other person who might seem to want to do the same. And I do that with a very heavy heart. It's very difficult to do, but I find I have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Yes, that leaves me. On November 3, 2010, the New Market Town Council acted on an agenda item to fill the vacancy of a member of the zoning board of adjustment. As chairman, I had submitted emails endorsing one of our past regular members to the position based on experience, knowledge of ZBA procedures, and dedication to the job of that individual. The vice chairman, Mr. Richard Shelton, who has served the board for many more years than I, including several terms as chairman, also endorsed that same individual. During the previous filling of an open vacancy in July of 2010, we both had endorsed that individual, and neither council meeting was that endorsed individual approved. Instead, someone with no previous ZBA experience was selected. I never received any explanation why the council acted as they did, other than in a statement at one of the meetings of the needing new blood, quote-unquote, by one of the counselors. In my recommendation emails, I had noted how difficult the ZBA rules and procedures can be, and how important it is to have the most highly qualified individuals chosen to this board. I also noted that three alternate positions are intended to allow new people to become acquainted with the rules and procedures before being appointed to a regular position. Since the New Market Town Council has chosen to disregard the recommendations of the chairman and vice chairman of the ZBA to try to get the best qualified members appointed without giving any reason, I can only conclude that they have lost confidence in the current board and its leadership. So after agonizing over this apparent lack of respect and wanting to do what is best for the town of New Market, I too have decided to resign.
We also have to be effective when our presentations are live and effective today.
Okay.
Well, it won't be effective until the council votes. So get your paperwork to the town hall, I guess.
They have to be reviewed by the council before they...
Any additional? Sorry, Mr. Rosa?
This has nothing to do with you.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Sorry. Actually, it does.